Could I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Planning Board for November 19th, 2018, and happy Thanksgiving to all. First matter on the agenda is approval of the November 5th, 2018 minutes. Do we have an approval of those minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's made. And second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those minutes are approved. Thank you. So tonight, we have a site plan, a pre-application plan, and we have a minor discussion on Stratum Street. So we're going to take the Stratum Street minor discussion first. This discussion is 27 Stratum Street, which was a definitive subdivision. The proponent has taken a minor modification and requested the board to review the changes to the site plan for the above address. The proposed changes include removing a portion of the sidewalk for emergency access. The project received definitive subdivision approval in June of 2018. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Matt Hammer with Lamplex, 10 George Street Lowell. After the planning board approved the subdivision with conditions, we've been working through DPD, the Department of Public Works, the Fire Department, in order to address all the conditions of the approval. One of the conditions which warranted coming in before you folks for what we're addressing as an insignificant change was the, this particular area right in here where the original plan had called for a sidewalk for a small portion of this section. And then we realized in order to make the turnaround more acceptable to the Fire Department, what we're proposing to is cross stripe this area and mark it as a fire lane with signage in order to provide that for the emergency turnaround, knowing that the sidewalk really just needed to go from this house out to Morton Street, and then that could just simply start here on the easterly side of the driveway.
And there was a, this should be correspondence to the effect from the Fire Department approving this plan that you have before you?
Yes, we do receive some communication from Patrick, my associate planner. He indicated that the conditions that you requested are a couple of the conditions that we approved that have been reviewed by the Fire Department, City Engineers Office, and planning staff, I believe, and they have an agreement with the changes as well. Correct, Christine?
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So just would you permit me to consider the minor modification? I'll make a motion that this is a minor modification.
I'll second the motion.
Motion's made. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next question we need now is an amendment to the conditions as approved as requested by staff, Fire Department, and City Engineer. I'll make a motion that we approved them as we requested the minor modifications as we received from associate planner by Patrick Burns dead November 15th, that ordered to satisfy condition two, four, and six. DPD Commissioner was out there and made corrective changes, as well as to change number four and six was approved by the Public Works Department, Fire Department, and the City Engineer. So I make the motion to approve the, these minor modifications as amended to the site plan.
I'll second that as well.
Seconded by Mr. Lockhart. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Good luck. Moving back to the regular agenda, the matter on the first public hearing is a site plan review, 677 and 705 Pawtucket Boulevard, also known as Market Basket. Application was submitted by DSM Realty, Inc. for approval of site plan review under section 11.4 and other relief required by the Lowell ordinance. The applicant is proposing to construct an approximate 72,500 square foot Market Basket supermarket and 1,200 square feet of retail space at the above address with 437 parking spaces, accessory landscaping, stormwater management, and utility improvements. The project includes reconstruction of 134 spaces of parking lot from the existing restaurant at 705 Pawtucket Boulevard. This site is located in a suburban mixed-use zoning district. And may we hear from the applicant, please?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Gregory Curtis. I'm attorney with Goldman and Curtis here at 144 Merrimack Street. I'm here on behalf of the Market Basket and Demoulis supermarket with regards to the plan before you. This is a continuation from the October 1st, 2018 meeting, in which we ran through quite a few of the issues that were before the board, and we were waiting at that time for more information with regards to the traffic study and traffic plans. And subsequently to that, we have had a meeting on October 31st, which included the peer review of the traffic study from the outside source, also traffic engineer from the city of Lowell, Natasha Vance, myself, Jim Lamp, project engineer, and Rob Nagy and Kathleen Keen from the, from VHP, which do the traffic studies. We came up with several different scenarios for traffic implementation for mainly Old Ferry Road and Varnum Avenue. We know this has been a difficult point right from the beginning, and trying to get this right is what we're trying to do. At this time, we thought we had two viable options that would be addressed to the board. One would be the signal light, which we felt was in consideration of safety issues and viable to make the neighborhood safe with regards to turn lanes and controlling traffic. Second proposal was a roundabout. The roundabout had been talked about quite some time. It is a great concept, however, there is a much higher cost involved with that and makes it a little bit cost prohibitive. We relied on the recommendations of the traffic engineer and Jeffrey Dirk, who basically have come up with plans, and I'm sure they'll, they'll speak to those, that the best alternative would be the traffic signal, that the traffic signal would control the flow of traffic, would also have crosswalks and turn lanes at Old Ferry and Varnum Avenue. We thought that at this point, that would be the best way to go. Earlier today, I was talking with my client. We're hoping that we gain approval of the board tonight. We want to leave the door somewhat open to the matter of a roundabout. And the reason I say that is we're considering funding the majority of cost of a potential roundabout there, but there are many things involved with a little bit more taking and the city's development of working on moving poles and lines with national grid, so it would be something that we would have to look into a little further. But we're looking for construction date to start in early 2019 with opening of a store at our best scenario this time next year. So Thanksgiving 2019, we'd like to have a store open there. Worst case, we look into early 2020. So in reading through reports from Pat Burns from the Planning and Development, and looking at the summary of the project and the other comments, I think, you know, we're in agreement with, with all of the comments. We don't have an issue with really anything that they're proposing. We've already gone through most of those, whether it be Pawtucket Boulevard and turn lanes. We still need to go to the Board of Appeals for curb cuts and signage on the pylon sign, but we don't anticipate those will be large issues. We also did receive approval from Conservation, from the Lowell Conservation Commission on October 24th, 2018. So at this time, I, I have the report in front of me. I think you've all received a copy of the report. It's 112 pages long regarding traffic, and maybe Rob Nagy could come up and speak to you with regard to questions you may have with regard to how we're, we've arrived at these traffic mitigation proposals. Thank you.
Again, for the record, Robert Nagy with Vanessa and Bruce Lynn. As Attorney Curtis mentioned, the study that we performed was basically at the request of this board to try to zero in on what the appropriate mitigation at this particular intersection is. I think you'll recall the original proposal basically being, you know, turn lanes at the intersection, and we've come a long way since then through those discussions. We looked at five different alternatives specifically for this location. One of them involved just simply providing turning lanes on Old Ferry Road. One looked at providing turning lanes on Old Ferry Road, as well as a left turn lane off of Varnum Avenue, looking at, you know, how traffic flows through there and operational benefits that would bring. I think we can, we can agree that it would, it would address the, the specific impacts of the project, but the longstanding impacts of the existing intersection out there certainly wouldn't be addressed. We then considered the traffic signal as an option. We heard loud and clear that a regular traffic signal might not necessarily be something that was supported full, you know, fully. So we looked at the idea of perhaps a decorative one. There, there's many different examples of those in suburban neighborhoods. The, the type of architecture that goes into the traffic signal would be such that it would blend in. It would still be a traffic signal, but the intersection would operate very well with, with that kind of traffic control located at it. Pedestrian movements would all be controlled, traffic movements would all be controlled. And for that reason, I think that was the initial recommendation that we ended up coming up with. As Attorney Curtis noted, the roundabout option, which is something that we heard loud and clear at the last meeting as well, which was really more in character with the neighborhood and takes away the signal sort of look and feel from the discussion, certainly would also address the traffic impacts associated with this project and the existing traffic conditions in the area. The challenge that obviously comes with the, with the roundabout is both cost and right-of-way that, that needs to be advanced on that. And I think, as you heard, that there's a willingness by the, the applicant to move forward with that, but there's certainly a lot of things that need to happen in order for that to, to take place. So at this point in time, working with city staff, working with your peer reviewer, I think the recommendation that we'd like to move forward with at this point in time is that traffic signal option with keeping the door open, as Attorney Curtis noted, for continuing the discussions to see if we can get to that solution that provides the roundabout with this board. And I think that's, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant? Mr. Dirk, would we mind if we ask you to, we did receive a report from you, but I ask you, since you're here and want to nicely report, can you give us your comment?
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa and Associates, and we're the board's consultant on the traffic engineering peer review for this project. I think you had a very good summary of what the applicant had prepared in terms of the additional materials that were submitted. So they did go through a detailed traffic analysis of five alternatives that you had heard. And I think just to kind of back up with respect to one element, we had discussed at the last hearing about, they had collected some supplemental traffic count data, and it was done the week of Labor Day, I believe, and with some question about, you know, how traffic patterns during that week might have been affected by the fact that there was a holiday. For this analysis that they provided to you, they did go back out and do updated traffic counts in October. So the idea would be to try to eliminate any question with respect to the seasonality and impacts of the holiday season. So I think that's a good thing, because at least from that standpoint, the numbers that they're looking at, at that intersection have been refreshed and updated and are no longer influenced by the fact of that, that holiday season. So again, you heard a summary of the five alternatives they looked at. And I think as we assessed it in terms of a couple of things, the first was addressing the impacts of the project. And the applicant was correct in stating that their original proposal, which was just to add some turn lanes on Old Ferry Road approaching the intersection, that addresses the impacts of the project, but it doesn't address the concerns that both the neighborhood and I think the city had in terms of what happens at that intersection with the vehicle queuing and the backups that are happening. And I think from the standpoint of looking at the neighborhood along Varnum Avenue, it also didn't address the issue of neighborhood cut-through traffic, speed of traffic approaching that intersection, as well as pedestrians crossing and bicycle accommodations there as well. So the board directed the applicant to go back and look at kind of a more robust analysis, a functional design report is what we had suggested they do. That is, in fact, what they've delivered to you. And I think what you heard in terms of summary and what we had reached in conclusion as well, is what it boiled down to is there were two alternatives at the intersection that would address traffic operations, safety, and as well would address traffic calming to some extent in the neighborhood. And I think what we came out at, as well as the applicant as well, is that the signal does address those issues. However, I think we were very clear in saying the roundabout is the optimal solution. So if money and timing and land acquisition were not an issue here, so the perfect world scenario, the roundabout would address all of the issues, would address traffic calming for the neighborhood, would address traffic operations at the intersection, and it would allow for having future capacity for things that we talked about, the Buddhist temple coming online, any other development in the area. So it was kind of the best of all worlds. The issue was cost, timing, and the need to acquire right-of-way at the intersection. So if we take those into account, and now we're really looking at a realistic scenario for the city and for the neighborhood, a neighborhood-focused traffic signal would allow for the intersection to be improved, address the impacts of the project, could be designed in such a way that it blends in and addresses the master plan. So I think you heard the applicant's traffic engineer talk about, we're not talking about, you know, stainless steel traffic signals and, you know, yellow painted back plates and traffic signals and things like that. A neighborhood-focused traffic signal would be something that blends in, so green-coated traffic signal elements out there. You know, the neighborhood could work on whether they wanted to do some things with the traffic signal controller out there, whether it needed to be painted, and they could bring some neighborhood-focused design to those elements as well. So there's a lot of things that can be done so that this is, it blends in and becomes a suburban-like traffic signal that has all of the advantages of traffic calming, the pedestrian accommodations, the bicycle accommodations at it as well. So we arrived at, if the roundabout couldn't be constructed, the traffic signal is something that could be put in at that location. The applicant had agreed to do that, and that with a neighborhood-focused design of the traffic signal, it could be something that would be in keeping with the desired elements of the Pawtucketville neighborhood master plan as well. So that's where we've kind of settled out in terms of our recommendations at that intersection, again, dealing with the reality of what could be there. I'm very happy to hear what the applicant has proposed tonight, and it would seem to be that working with staff, if a condition could be crafted, that would a lot of the project move forward with the traffic signal being the, kind of the condition that would be put in place, however, if there were some way that the roundabout could be constructed and the applicant agreed to fund the design and construction of that. That's the best of all worlds.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question to Mr. Dirk. Just a question, in, in looking at the study and all of the options, it met the warrant. So it-
Correct.
So the traffic counts ultimately didn't affect anything, but-
Right.
Again, pet peeve of mine, the counters went up October 4th. October 6th, they ripped up Varnum Ave., ripped it up, ground it down. I walk that every other day, 5:30 in the morning, and as I'm walking, it's like, jeez, it's a lot darker than it had been, because the cars were avoiding that to try to get the lights from the traffic cars. So, you know, once again, an attempt to try to get, I think, some, some better numbers-
Right.
Um, but the timing, to me, did not work out very well. Having said that, looking at all the warrants were met, I suspect the numbers would have been higher-
Correct.
-had that, you know, been a different time.
Very good point, yes.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your help. Since we're on traffic, I'm going to turn it over to, if I may, to our traffic engineer. I know she prepared a memorandum for us as well. So if I could just ask Natasha to give us her comments, please. I do, I do, I do know that we have your comments that you did send to us, but if you could just comment on those, then at least we've heard from all three traffic people, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'm in agreement with everything, basically what Mr. Dirk said. We did meet with the applicant. We reviewed the functional design report or the alternatives analysis memo that they provided. As noted, the traffic counts definitely warrant an improved traffic mitigation at that intersection. We're well aware that the neighborhood is not a fan of the traffic signal. The problem for us from the city perspective is that I'm not confident that we would be able to fund the remainder of the construction costs for the roundabout. And that being the case, the upside to the traffic signal is that it does resolve all of the traffic concerns in terms of it slows speeds on Varnum Avenue. It create, we are, we would be able to have safe pedestrian access. It would also eliminate the queuing concerns and the queuing that currently exists. That being said, I think I'm also in agreement with Mr. Dirk that a roundabout would be an ideal solution. We, one of the concerns there is the right-of-way acquisition, and if that went to a taking, it would require city council approval. And we're not able to, you know, definitively say that that would be, would go through city council, because some of the councilors are, are not in favor of taking private property for municipal projects. So those are my, the cost, the time to complete, and the right-of-way acquisition are my concerns. And again, I am aware that the neighborhood is not a fan of the, of the light, but I do think it's, from a traffic safety perspective, which is my main concern, it does resolve those issues.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the public at this point in time, and at this time, I'll start with anybody who's in favor of the project.
Comments? It's not being for or against him, who's not in favor of Market Basket, but being from the neighborhood and we don't have-
Can we just have your name for the record, please, ma'am?
Yeah, Deb Forgione.
Thank you.
Pawtucketville Citizen Council. We're not a one-man band tonight, but we've got a group of people here tonight that do want to speak. Okay, so, and I want to be respectful. With all due respect, the cost from, the ideal situation is the roundabout. Everyone in this room, every report, every expert says that the roundabout is the best solution for the neighborhood. The cost is $400,000 extra. And a project like this, you can be guaranteed that that is, Market Basket will be there at least 60 more years. We have an obligation in 2019 for all the residents that are here, is to fight to do better. Everyone in this room, by the time that Market Basket's up, and it's been there for the next 40 years, most of us in this room won't be here, but we're doing it for the neighborhood, for everyone that comes after us, because this generation that's here tonight are the ones that are living with the temporary Rourke Bridge. So what we're asking is, if you can just see the wisdom, we have the Rourke Bridge, because in the 80s, we were told it was temporary. And now there's nobody in this room that doesn't know what it's like now for a solution back then that people felt that was the best thing to do at the time. And actually, by not doing it right the first time, I'm having compensation for it as we go forward, we do have a problem with the Rourke Bridge, and there's nobody in here that, that would deny that. So here we are right now. We have an opportunity that every report you have says the roundabout is the best solution. It's $400,000. Surely, over the next 60 years, that that can be absorbed by Market Basket, perhaps with the city, with a partnership. It's such short money for the length of time. And I can guarantee you, if we can get to that Market Basket, we can guarantee Artie Demoulis that we are going to be shopping as long as we can get there. There's no way that we're not going to support the Market Basket. There's 14,000 people that live in Pawtucketville. 8,000 of them live in West Pawtucketville, which is the neighborhood of this Market Basket. Right now, the traffic in that area, anyone that's been through it can attest how difficult it has been. So with that said, when we met in the summer and we had talked with Market Basket, we had talked with Market Basket about the roundabout, and the traffic engineer felt that it was the best solution, because they did it in Lynn, Mass., and they encouraged us to go look at the Market Basket. It was going to look pretty much the same on the exterior of the Lynn Market Basket, and the roundabout was the solution that they had for that traffic. So we looked at the roundabout. You can actually go on YouTube. You can see how the roundabout works. And with that said, we saw it. Everyone was happy that that was going to be the solution for a neighborhood. And now here we are, talking about the set of lights, which is not the best option. So the best option is the roundabout. It's 400,000. We're, we're living with the Rourke Bridge as a temporary solution. I'm asking the board tonight, and if Artie Demoulis is listening, if we could have the roundabout and prepare for 2019 and for the next 50 to 60 years to make sure that that neighborhood is, is still the same neighborhood it is now, with a brand-new Market Basket that people are going to be happy to have. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question? You mentioned the 400,000 three times. Can you tell me what that's for?
Okay, so in the report, I believe they said it's going to cost 900,000, and Market Basket said the set of lights is going to cost 530,000?
And they said, and this would not count any land taking. So that would just be for the light. So if there was a roundabout and there was land taken, it would be more than, so that's only talking about the lights, not the land taken, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood that.
Okay, so here, here's the situation. The situation is if you say the land taking, so the amount of land that they need to take, is that in the report?
Nope, because that's not in front of us.
Okay, but do you think that they should have considered that?
No, because it has to go out the estimate. It has to go up when, what the city council is doing right now for the high school, which has been in the paper for the last, how many years?
So actually, that's a good thing that you mentioned in that, because-
Oh, there will be appraisals and everything else down the road, so I don't think they'd bother to have that all appraised. So main thing would be, there would be a cost that, with this here, that for, you know, you're talking about the traffic improvement, not the cost of the taking, and I have no idea how much land that would be, so.
Good that you're mentioning that.
It'd be up to the council, I guess, though.
Yeah. Good thing that you're mentioning that, because if it can be done for the downtown, surely a neighborhood like Pawtucketville that's dealing with the Rourke Bridge could have some kind of relief in our neighborhood. have some kind of relief in our neighborhood. Surely, you can see how much better the roundabout will be for us, and that Market Basket's going to be there for a very long time. And so if there is a cost to the land taking, then you should add it into the report so that people have a clear figure. But I still think it's the option that would be best for the neighborhood for the next 50 to 60 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
John Hamlet, 495 Varnum Ave. I'd like to discuss two things. The first, I'm going to put my Pawtucketville Citizens Council hat on. The second, I'm going to take that off, and I'll be the guy at the corner of Varnum and West Meadow. It sounds as though there's no question about the roundabout. It meets all the traffic demands. It helps us cut through traffic. It helps us with speeding, which is a problem. And it helps us with the bike traffic. And equally important, it meets our neighborhood needs and what we outlined in our master plan. The three concerns, cost, timing, and can we get the land. I don't agree that getting the land would politically be a problem. That was just done. I don't see if it's important that it's a vacant lot, that taking the land is going to be as much of a problem as, for example, taking over a doctor's office. As far as timing, I'm not really sure how that's a critical issue. In terms of cost, the figure $400,000 has been raised, and $400,000 does sound like a lot of money unless you amortize it. And then, it's what, $40,000 over 10 years, or $20,000 a year over 20 years? That's fairly small change in most of the city budgets. Also, Market Basket representative mentioned, and if I misheard, please correct me, that they might up their contribution towards this. So that may not be an accurate figure, that 400. So I would encourage the planning board to seriously consider what is clearly the preferred option, and let's try and figure out how to overcome what I see as the smaller stumbling blocks. All right, John Hamlet now takes off his Pawtucketville Citizens Council hat and puts on the guy who lives at the corner of Varnum and West Meadow. At the last meeting, we were talking about several studies that were going to take place. As I understand it, a vast majority of the traffic, when they come out of Market Basket, are going to turn right on Old Ferry, and a vast majority of those are going to turn right on Varnum Ave. And so we have several residents here who live on Varnum Ave, and I think we're interested in some of the specifics behind the traffic calming. It's vaguely mentioned in one or two of the reports that I could download from the city website. But I would, Mr. Chairman, like to hear detail about traffic calming. Not a vague promise about what's going to happen in the future, but maybe some specific timelines and specific actions. And those traffic calming measures are going to deal specifically with the cut-through traffic, the speeding, the increase in traffic. And I may not have this correct, but at one point in time, I saw the number of cars turning onto Varnum from Old Ferry was actually less than the vehicles turning from Varnum up West Meadow Road. So that was 14,000 or 15,000, I think, that I saw a month or so ago. I haven't been able to verify those figures. But I would hope that the planning board would take a vague statement about traffic planning and build it into the requirements of Market Basket and of the city so that we know specifically what's going to be done to make our neighborhood and our the main street going through our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Go ahead, go ahead. How you doing? I'm done. Good. How you doing? Good. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Jim Lamp. I'm an engineer that works in-house with Market Basket, with J&amp;Co. There seems to be a little confusion on, one, the $400,000 number was brought up, and it is the assumed delta between the construction cost of a signal and the construction cost of a roundabout. What was stated by Mr. Curtis earlier is that Market Basket would like to have the option to work with the city after a conditional approval with the signal to see if we can pay for all the design and construction costs. However, the one thing that is out of our control is the purchase of right-of-way. That is something that we cannot compel anybody to do. We cannot force them to do. That is something that has to be a taking through the city, and we have to work with the city through that to see if we can do that. So what's been stated is our intention is to try to pursue a roundabout, but there are going to be some things that have to occur on the city's side in order for us to fund the construction and the design of that. And what we're asking for the board tonight is to approve the conditional approval with the construction of a roundabout and all the other off-site mitigation that's been discussed, but leave open the option for us to pursue the roundabout with help from the city on right-of-way takings, utility relocations, and a few other items.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, could I have clarification?
Yep.
So are you indicating, then, that based on numbers we're looking at today, that Market Basket is considering funding the $950,000?
Correct.
Okay.
And the one thing I'd like to clarify also, I was involved with the Lynn project. The Lynn project did have a large roundabout. We had an abutter who dedicated, I believe, three corners of that. We controlled ourselves, two corners, and the city obtained all other right-of-way that was necessary for that to be constructed. The city did the takings, and then we worked with the city on reimbursement for those takings. But it's something that we could not compel people to sell to us. So it only occurred with cooperation with the City of Lynn. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is George Zaharulis, and I live on Derby Way, right around O'Connor. And I'm quite disturbed at hearing some of the comments. Old Ferry Road is a very interesting road, and Varnum Ave is a very interesting road. I see speeders on that road all the time, and it's sometimes a little difficult. But the one thing that bothers me, somebody mentioned the Pawtucketville Neighborhood Master Plan. Is that something new that has come up because it expired 2016? So there's no master plan for Pawtucketville, as far as I know. There is, however, a master plan for the city overall, and that was put together, and I have a copy of that. If you'd give me a little bit of time.
Take your time, sir.
And that's the Sustainable Lowell 2025. I looked both of the plans over very carefully to find out if there's anything in there that pertains to any kind of lights on Varnum Ave or in Pawtucketville, and there's none on either group. I have a different proposal. I don't agree with either side except for Market Basket. I don't think it's necessary to put a roundabout in, and I don't think it's necessary to put a whole bunch of lights. But I think if you put stop signs and pave the, paint the pavement, that it'll suffice and take care. And we have to take a look at the pedestrians that are walking, their safety, and I think there might be a consideration for a sidewalk because it's on the wrong side. If you're coming from my house to walk to Market Basket, I'd like to have a sidewalk, at least on that side. Of course, I'm, you know, I'm kind of one of these people that I don't agree with either side because I have my own opinion. And I guess I'm opinionated that way. But I think this thing has to be stopped tonight, passed, approved, and then you can work out whether you want stoplights, whether you want stop signs, or if you want roundabouts. Because I'm tired of going across the bridge. Okay? I go across the bridge several times a day, and I go down Old Ferry Road. And Old Ferry Road, early in the morning, is busy, and late at night, it's busy. It's going to be, I think, by building Market Basket there, it's going to decrease the volume going across to Wood Street. And I think it's going to take some of that traffic off. So I think that should be considered. The other thing that has to be considered is the economics and the best use of the land. And, you know, I'm hearing all these roundabouts, this, that. I think this is a delaying tactics that should be stopped. Let them go forward, build a market, have their people study whether they want stops, whether they want lights, or whether they want roundabouts. But let me tell you, I don't think the roundabouts are going to do it. Stoplights and stop signs, yes. Because if you come from Tinsborough down, certain times of day, you can't see the cars. And at night, you can't see the cars. They're speeding up and down. There's nothing to stop them from speeding one way or the other. And then you have these quick-turn artists going from Varnum Ave down Old Ferry Road, taking a left, going across traffic. There's got to be a way to stop that. Roundabouts will not do it because what you're going to have is merging traffic. And merging traffic means they're not really going to slow down. It's going to merge, and some idiot is going to go through there, go around that turnabout, and collect somebody. So you've got to be careful. But I'm very concerned on this Pawtucketville Master Plan. Because like I indicated, the one that I have here expired. It's non-existent. So you have to go with the city plan. Thank you very much for your time, and thanks for listening to me, and good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Because I was on that side of the board one time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Steve Massey, Tartman, Tartman Street. In favor of the project, in favor of what's best for the traffic, whatever that may be. But I will say, this gentleman is a pretty wise guy, and you all know that. So he brought up some very good points that need to be considered. I wouldn't want to be you guys. You've got to figure this out. But the roundabout's what the traffic engineers kind of have figured out, our traffic engineer, if that's what it may be, and these people are very generously willing to put up almost a million dollars for it. There's got to be some midway point where we can do something and have it be right. But I'm kind of glad you came here and spoke because that's important. Because he brought up good points. Everything has to be looked at, and hopefully, they did look at everything that we have to do there. We're just trying to get the best thing for everybody that drives that road. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak?
James Campbell from Johnson Street. We welcome Market Basket to the neighborhood. But we do have some concerns about the traffic flow, the fact that those of us who live west of Old Ferry Road, off of Varnum Ave, the nearest egress from Varnum Ave is almost two miles away. And we're concerned about the impact that that would have to the residents on that portion of the neighborhood. So we strongly encourage the roundabout solution. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. Jim McMorro, 21 Lyndon Circle. I came here tonight thinking it was either going to be a roundabout or a traffic light. I'm enlightened, the fact that some of the data is therefore a traffic light right now, immediately, but down the road, that Market Basket will help out with the roundabout. I'm in favor of the roundabout to keep the flavor of the neighborhood looking as it is. With that being said, I thank Market Basket for upping the ante a little bit. I have a couple of questions, though. Once we do go forward, if we do go forward, you go forward with the traffic light, would that light be synchronized with the light on Pawtucket Boulevard? That would be through you, Mr. Chairman, to whoever's in charge, the engineer from the city?
It certainly could be synchronized. I don't know that we've gotten that far in the design process.
I think that would be a great consideration due to the morning and the evening traffics.
I would agree.
You know, okay, good. Seeing that Market Basket is open to a roundabout, could we look for a definitive timeline to revisit when the roundabout should come into play?
I'll let Bob answer that. I think, yeah, Rob, I'm sorry, for the traffic pickle. I think there was, part of it was a study to be condensed and then to come back before us again after so many periods of time, right? Sure, could somebody, Mr. Curtis, if you want to answer that?
Oh, I think--
Because it wasn't a study to go into effect, and after six months, I'm going to review it again and then come back?
No, that was a proposal if there was going to be some study for traffic calming and traffic in the area. But our proposal is to get approval tonight with a traffic signal because we're under the situation where we cannot control how we're going to obtain property in that area. We need to work hand-in-hand with the city. The ultimate goal is a roundabout. And we're here tonight with a unique opportunity with a client that wants to spend upwards of a million dollars to put a roundabout in. But we can't do it alone. We need to have full cooperation from the city to do that. And we're looking for design purposes to get things moving quickly so that by the time we hit February or March, we know what's going to happen. If we're going to be doing a roundabout, then the design plans, which could cost upwards of $100,000 just in design costs, would be to design a roundabout. It would not be to design a light. You also need lead time to order lights and poles and all the things that would need for a traffic signal. As I said at the beginning, we'd like to be open by Thanksgiving of next year. Worst-case scenario, maybe March of 2020. So time is definitely of the essence, and as much as we are in favor of how the city operates, you know, we really have to move quickly on trying to get these parcels that would be the eminent domain. They're not going to be large parcels, and as one of the recipients, or one of the people that spoke, they're small parcels of land. We may need to even go back to conservation because I think part of what's in the water dis, what the water company owns, water company, the City of Lowell Water Department, is in that, maybe in that 100-year floodplain, I'm not sure. But as you look at the plan for a roundabout, it definitely pushes it out a little bit on either side.
Mr. Curtis, may I add, because it was indicated earlier that it hadn't been looked at, but, I mean, if you look at the analysis, I believe it has. So I believe the estimate was 11,400 square feet. All right? I mean, people heard, say it wasn't looked at, but it's in this document right here. It says approximate square feet. Foot permanent highway easement, if roadway is constructed to full design standard. In some cases, the right-of-way impacts could be minimized, eliminated with minor variances to the design standards that could modify the layout. So based on what was proposed, it was 11,400 square feet.
Right, which is not a lot of land, considering talking about a roundabout. But with regard to that, there's still possibilities that you're going to deal with people that-- But with regard to that, there's still possibilities that you're going to deal with people that you're going to have to take the land, you're going to have to pay them for it, and you're going to have to work out those proposals. You also have issues with power lines. You have some high-tension power lines that go across, and we're hoping that National Grid works with many cities and towns to move those, if they need to be moved, at no cost. We're trying to minimize the cost to the city completely. But there is going to be some costs, but probably 90% to 95% of it is going to be paid by the client.
Mr. Curtis, maybe the traffic engineer could clarify. On the option for the signalization, it says 300 square feet. It says permanent impacts to right-of-way on north side of the intersection totaling 300 square feet. What exactly is?
That's the, where the light poles go, where the condominiums are, across from Old Ferry Road.
Is that a taking?
That's, that would, that would be a, that would be a taking.
That would be a taking?
Yeah.
For the lights? On the private property?
300, 300 square feet. Yeah.
So it would be the same process that we'd go through for the 11,400, except a little bit more involved?
Provide a little bit of clarity to that. There's, there's an existing crosswalk that goes across Varnum Avenue in that area today that dumps the pedestrian into, I shouldn't say dumps, but leads the pedestrian right into a catch basin on the other side of the road. Not a sidewalk. So in that area there, we'd create a little bit of a sidewalk area, which would be to the benefit of the pedestrian there. So that's really where that taking is. There'd be an easement that would likely be asked for, for the signal pole that Mr. Curtis referenced.
Would that be from the?
That would be from the condominium area there. If that was not granted, we could move it to a different location and still build the traffic signal. But it would be ideal if it was in that location.
And that would require a vote of the city council?
That would not require a vote of the city council to move it to a different location.
I can move it to a different location.
To put it into that location, that would either be negotiated directly privately with the landowner, or the city council would need to advance that. The same process would take place as part of that.
Even for the 11,400, an attempt could be made to negotiate that with the private homeowners. Is that correct?
Yeah. Could I address the process we would have to go through? I feel like that maybe would answer some of the questions that are coming up.
Sure. Because I think we have some options.
Yeah, so, you know, obviously, the traffic signal can be constructed within the right-of-way. The traffic signal pole could be placed on the city's land, and/or the applicant could negotiate with the condo across the street for the 300 feet, the permanent easement to place the traffic pole. So because it's, it's a different scenario than the roundabout, it doesn't, it would not likely require the same process and going through a city council vote in order to get that land. If, if the roundabout, and it's my understanding that the applicant is willing to continue moving forward, the situation for the city is we don't yet understand what our costs might be, or what, what ultimately it would end up being. So essentially, we would get, the applicant would come up with 100% design plans, which would have to be approved by the city. Then they would produce taking plans for right-of-way acquisition, which would include that 11,400, which is an approximation. But that's most likely what it would end up being, which is about a third of an acre. Not incredibly significant. There, a portion of the land is owned by the city, and we would likely be able to donate that. I obviously can't make that decision. But the next step would be appraisals or assessment of the property that would be required. We would request a donation of the property for the benefit of the project. Any private landowners who did not wish to donate that property would then get offer letters. And then presumably, they would either accept the offer, or then not accept. And the problem comes if they do not accept the offer, then the city, in order to proceed with the project, would have to take that property. And then that would require city council approval. Now, and if we make an offer and it's accepted, that also requires city council approval. Generally speaking, the city council doesn't have a problem with receiving donations or transfer of property. And then the other thing that needs to be completed, as Mr. Curtis mentioned, is that there, there would be likely utility relocation design. And typically, the way that works is the utility company does the design. If it's part of a public works project, they're willing to, or only charge 50%. It's not typically 0%, but we can also negotiate that with National Grid or Verizon. So that's generally the process. I just thought that might help clarify things for everyone.
Yeah, no, I just, before we went down the road, it was somehow established earlier that we have no idea what the taking would be, how much.
Yeah. I think one of the residents said that.
I think everybody that was.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we do have a pretty definitive idea. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And that's 11,400 square feet. That's not one parcel. That's a little bit across the street, a little bit on the other side.
Correct.
Sliver here and a sliver.
It's my understanding that is for the entire roundabout project.
Under a quarter of an acre. Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Well, we're getting some information out here, aren't we?
Yeah, let me ask you anything, or make it worse.
I have another question. It appears that traffic lights, roundabout, is going to be the sequence of, you know, things to go forward. Do the traffic counts going forward with the anticipated traffic, does the state mandate lights or a roundabout? Would it put the roundabout out of the picture?
I think in clarification, it is not a sequence of signals turning into roundabout. It is, it is one or the other. We will have to get to a point which, what we're hoping, and we haven't had these discussions yet with the city, but I would like to have an MOU with the city before Christmas. And there would be, we would figure out what's needed, what has to be done by us, what has to be done by the city, and we can move forward. Then we can look at the actual right-of-way and figure out if it's possible. And your next question was of what is required by the state. What's been said here is, is a signal adequately mitigates this project and all concerns that the city has. The druthers of everybody, everybody would love to have a roundabout, which does the same thing, and in many opinions, does it in a nicer way. That's as simple as I can put it. But they both mitigate the project, they both mitigate existing problems that are out there, speed, traffic, you know, and cut-throughs. But the desire would be to have a roundabout. What we're trying to do is keep that dream alive, and not put it to rest tonight, but say, request of the board a conditional approval for a signal. And if we can come to agreement with the city, we will offer to pay for the design and construction of a roundabout if we can meet certain requirements, which would be flood mitigation, right-of-way takings, utility relocations, and timing of all this. So there's many steps that need to happen, but we're trying to keep that dream alive and not, not put the roundabout to bed quite yet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe that's how I should have said it.
Thank you.
My last concern is, is just cut-through controls through the neighborhoods. I still see with the traffic counts going up, they'll probably come down upon the city engineer to mitigate the cut-throughs, Townsend Ave. and stuff like that. So I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anybody else? Anybody else?
Curtis Lemay, Foddy Roberts, Street Law. I guess I would just say that on behalf of Mr. Curtis, the Demoulis Foundation, and the PCC, and I don't take anything away from Judge Zaharulis, who served on this board. Everyone's been very compassionate. I think what we have to understand is, much as the Demoulis family is willing to have dialogue with all those involved, I think it's important to have a seat at the table. Because the last time I was here, I was not privy to the roundabout, and now there's talk of land takings. I suppose it could possibly, I don't know for a fact, but it could land up into eminent domain proceedings. I don't know that. But I think a seat at the table is important. And I haven't had that, so I'm not going to speak too much about it. But the PCC is compassionate to the point that a lot of people look up to the group in Pawtucketville. I've been a member for over 40 years. And the taxpayers, when they have a problem, they come to the meeting. And these people serve at no compensation. They put in a lot of time, and they look out for everybody's best interest. And I think that's all that everybody is trying to accomplish. So if there's a possibility of someone that either represents that board to have a seat at the table with these people as things progress in the city, I think we could have a meeting of the means, and everything would hopefully come out satisfactory to, for the neighborhood and the Demoulis people. And I think that's what everybody is just looking for. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Sure. I just wanted to see if anybody else wants to speak before you come back up, if you don't mind, sir. Okay? Anybody else? Okay, go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
I'm just looking at Lowell GIS. I don't know how much land they're going to need of Steve's, but it looks like that's all about 104 feet, which I don't believe is in the 100-year floodplain. So there may not be a conservation issue.
Anybody else want to be heard? Anybody else sat over here? Natasha, Christine, anything you want to say before I turn it over to the board members?
I just wanted to address a couple comments, and I'm not sure who made them necessarily. I just wanted to make sure if everyone's questions are answered. Someone mentioned something about amortizing the cost for the city. We're not able to do that. If we have a capital project, we have to put it in the capital budget, and we're not able to amortize a project. So if the cost for the, the roundabout, for the, I understand what you're saying, for the city's part of the roundabout is $100,000, we do have to come up with those funds in that particular year. And that is, that is, you know, something we have to consider. There was also a question about the traffic calming study and looking for more specifics. The idea behind that is that the scope and design would be created, would be done by VHB and funded by Demoulis. At this point, we don't know what the appropriate traffic calming remedies are. But that's the purpose of that study, is to perform a study and then determine what traffic calming might be appropriate. And then, again, the city will need to find funds in order to implement that traffic calming. So that, those are just two things I wanted to make sure it was clear. And I would just like to note one more time, the light does meet the traffic needs, it is understood it doesn't meet Pawtucketville's neighborhood's suburban appearance. And the city is committed to working with Demoulis and the applicant to move toward a roundabout if that's feasible. We just don't know what the cost will be for the city at this point. And, and that's sort of the question that, that is still in the air for us.
Thank you.
I just, Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify. I think the person who spoke was indicating that Demoulis' capital expenditures can be amortized and then depreciate. As soon as you turn the key, all your accountants in the room, right? Boom. All right. And then depreciation, amortization, all of that kicks in. I just, I just want to clarify that. I understand the city's perspective, but I think that was, what was the point there?
Any comments from Christine? Do you have any comments or just what we see from Patrick before we go further?
Yeah, I don't have anything further to add.
Okay. All right, thank you. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members for their comments, questions, concerns. Mr. Luckhart, you want to go first?
This is in this memo from Patrick to us, dated November 15th. It makes mention of a site monitor as a proposed condition for approval. Is there any opposition to that at all? I mean, that's pretty much just.
Site, site monitoring during construction?
Where is it?
Number one.
DPD, Christine, maybe you can.
Site monitoring during construction of the proposed.
We often ask for site monitors for large projects. It's just basically, we determine between the staff and the applicant whether it's bi-weekly, weekly, monthly. We just kind of want check-in reports, so we can all stay ahead of.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
Yeah, all right. I just wanted to bring it up and get it on the table. Oh, I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Luckhart. Any of the board members have any questions or comments? Mr. Snetsky?
Yes. I'm pleased, you know, to hear that the roundabout is still possibly a viable option, you know, from a financial perspective between the city, the applicant, and so forth. My, my concern with that is the amount of time that that would take. Because I believe that we, you know, we do need some immediate mitigation at that intersection before the store were to open, or right around that time. Because, you know, if we're looking at six months, a year, a year and a half, that's a long time for the, you know, for the area to endure, you know, the additional traffic without the appropriate mitigation. Do you have any thoughts or plans on that?
The plan is to have that roundabout in prior to that store opening. Completed.
Perfect. That answers.
Completed, striped, everything would be completed. That's why it's imperative, if we move in this direction, we do it quickly, and we talk with the city. And this is not just something we're thinking about, this option is on the table. So we're there to build this roundabout, but we just want to get through some, you know, this came about very quickly in the, in the last couple of days. So we apologize for the short notice. But after listening to Pawtucketville residents and talking with Mr. Demoulis, you know, he felt this is his backyard. This is where he grew up, this is where the market started. He wants to do the best he can for, for that area. And, and I think everybody's of the agreement that a roundabout is the best way. It's, you don't have traffic lights, hopefully it works, there's not a lot of other traffic calming or traffic studies you need to do after putting in the roundabout. It's going to hopefully take care of most of the issues that we're dealing with. But we're not going to open up that store and not have that roundabout or a signal light in place. They have to be done.
Perfect. That answers my concern. You know, I just felt that, you know, if the roundabout was going to be something that was going to stretch out over an extended period of time, you know, there would be a problem.
Yeah. It's, it's my personal opinion, a roundabout could be built quicker than a signal because of the wait time on all the steel on a signal. There, there will be a part of the discussions, what happens if we go down the roundabout road and there's delays in the purchasing? You know, everybody agrees we're going to do it, but the process takes longer. What I'd like to leave on the table, and this, this is going to be a negotiation, so it's not going to be settled tonight, but what I'd like to leave on the table is if, you know, we're scheduled to open next Thanksgiving, and we're looking at a December 14th completion of the roundabout, that we would work with the city to make sure that all that work is either bonded, or there's a bank note there for that work to be completed, and whatever's in that, all the other stuff will be done. You know, the signal at Pawtucket and Old Ferry, all the other improvements that are listed on this conditional recommendation would be done. The timing of the roundabout kind of has yet to be determined. And what we'd like would be to work with the city and say, listen, everybody wants a roundabout. There might be a short period of pain and suffering by everybody, but we're going to get, try to get the roundabout in, and, and have it constructed properly. But there might be some give and take on both sides.
That's similar to my thought on the subject, and what I was going to say is something, that the construction be substantially either completed or underway, you know, before the store were to open. So that, that addresses my concern on that regard. Thank you.
Mr. Melvich, any questions or comments?
My only comment is, I, for years, when I worked with the city, I worked with the Demoulis family on a lot of things, and I, they're, what they say is their word. I've never found them to veer from that. So I think there's a way to come up with a compromise here, or an agreement, memorandum of our understanding, so that everybody's interests are met. And I, I And I, I welcome them into that neighborhood. I will support this project.
Thank you. Mr. Fushat?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, if I could, to follow up on Mr. Sinensky's question. So if the belief is, and again, there are still some unanswered questions, but if the belief is the roundabout could actually be constructed sooner than the lights, why wouldn't we be looking for the conditional approval tonight for the roundabout? And then if in the pursuit of that there is an issue, then it needs to come back before this board for review? I mean, if to...
Forget the signals.
They can speak to the roundabout, but I have concerns with the planning board conditioning approval on a project that requires land taking. I'm not sure that that's in the purview of this board.
Yeah, you'd be making a decision, I think, that would require takings, which not, the board is in that position to do that. That's why when we submit this with the light proposal, which everybody has supported, that would be the decision. But again, we would work expeditiously and get approval, hopefully that the roundabout would be the way to go. It may take a month...
We're not, we're not conditioning that, the takings. It's similar to, I'll go back to the Enchanted Forest, and we had the open space and the planning board, Mr. Lenehan sat on it at that time, and the former chairman was here, and they conditioned upon DCR taking the open space. You can't force DCR. And Mr. Lockhart was...
I remember that, yeah.
And they couldn't, they couldn't force DCR to take the open space. And ultimately, DCR did not take the open space, and they had to go back to the planning board, and that condition was amended. I came before the city council. Manager Cox was generous enough to support us petitioning DCR and draft, we drafted a letter for the manager to sign and get off to DCR. But, I mean, it certainly, the board did not have that authority. But certainly, the end result is for the applicant to work towards the ends with the city, in conjunction with the city, to get to this result. If it looks like that's not going to happen, then, I mean, I question whether or not, how that's phrased, whether or not that's, that's an issue.
I obviously wasn't on staff when the Enchanted Forest came in, but that was part of a larger subdivision. And our planning board rules and regulations for subdivisions do allow for open space requirements per the number of house slots. And I believe that decision was written, it would be the best option that the required open space be given to DCR, but in the event that it wasn't, we would create an LLC to manage it. So that was allowed through the subdivision regulations, where I have concerns that during the site plan review process, the board can't condition a roundabout because of takings. And I know that seems very similar, but I do think it's a nuance that I'm just generally concerned about.
I think we're talking about 300 square feet.
Sorry, and not to interrupt, but I also do want to state for the record, there is a commitment from the city to work with Market Basket, and that goes above Natasha and I.
No, and I, and I can appreciate that. I'm just, you know, the phrase is trying to keep the dream alive, trying to work. I've sat on that end for years, and I've sat here, and I know how well-intentioned, but if it's, if it, if it's not conditioned to happen, then things happen and everybody says they did their best. I'm just trying to capture this as much, this is so important, and you understand that.
It is. Jim Lamp again. This is, this is starting to go down the road of no good deed goes unpunished.
Understood.
And, and I really, we're here in public, it's on the record. I don't want to go down the road where there's an approval that has us doing something that we have no idea whether we can accomplish or not. We're on the record saying that we will fund construction and design of the roundabout, but we need things to happen on the side of the city. So we would like to request that the board give a conditional approval of the signal, which is completely within our control and completely mitigates all of our impacts and then some, which, but I spoke to Arthur Demoulis, and he said it's the right thing to do. He's done a lot of work for the city, he's done a lot of, you know, downtown work that is, he's not compelled to do. He's, he's a man of his word, and I really don't want to go down the road of having an approval that we do not know yet whether we can meet it and end up back before the board and back into another debate.
Can we have, can I have clarification on the MOU, then, how that would?
That would, MOUs have to be signed by the city manager?
Yep.
So that would be obviously above, you know, Christine and I's control. And the point I wanted to make is that, you know, I'm not able to make budget decisions. That's outside of my purview. I can only definitively say what can work traffic-wise and what cannot. One of the reasons that I am comfortable with conditional approval based on the traffic signal is I know that that will work and I know it will mitigate the traffic concerns. And I know it can be constructed without the city's involvement or any funds coming out of our budget. The, I am certainly more than happy to work with the applicant to see if we can get a, get a roundabout designed and approved, and the city engineer is also aware of this. We were made aware of this option earlier today, and we're, you know, just, you know, kind of scrambling to keep up a little bit, but, but certainly in support of it. We just don't know if it can definitively be done, and I don't know what the cost to the city will be. And so I'm personally in support of the conditional approval with the light, and then we will continue to move toward the roundabout rather than the light. But everybody does need to understand that that is not definitive, and we may not be able to make it happen. That's not to say we're not certainly going to try.
Now, in certainly that, coming up with the, with the resources to, to do this is, certainly appreciate, appreciate that. That is certainly come a long way from, from where we started on, on this issue. There may be some alternatives as well. This is quite an economic development project. And I don't know if there's been any discussion, I know we missed the last round of Mass Works funding, but they do fund off-cycle. And especially if it's a economic development project that, such as this. And Mr. Curtis said, do you have any idea how many jobs this is going to create?
Part-time jobs, I was told, close to 300. Full-time jobs, about 100. Tax revenue, about $175,000 a year in tax revenue, and on a consistent basis, even, you know, more so than that. So it's a, it's a substantial project. It's a $15 million building that we're putting up.
And you're not, and you're not closing another store, so you're really creating new jobs.
Yeah.
So I honestly think, Christine, I honestly think this is, even if, under an MOU, I mean, and I appreciate the, the, Demoulis coming up with the funding, but I think there may be some, some opportunity, especially if there are additional costs for Mass Works. And again, they will fund off-cycle.
Yes.
If I might speak to the Mass Works grant, we've done several projects where Lynn was one that had Mass Works grant involved, and also down at Fall River. The, the next round is next October.
Oh, I understand that.
So there's, there's little we can do on any issuance of the cashes for 2020, so we're already a year behind.
To your point that they do do it off-cycle, I just don't want to commit the city to applying for a Mass Works grant, because I don't know what's in our queue to ask for off-cycle funds with some other projects. But it's definitely something where I think if the roundabout, when we're looking at it for the MOU, definitely looking for Mass Works funding is definitely going to be up there. But I just think, to reiterate the point, there's just so many unknowns that we have to look forward to.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, I've had some experience, I am the, for the last 11 years, I've been the representative to NEMCOG for the planning board, so have seen this in, in action. And it is a possibility. And again, when you think of this project and you think of the jobs that are being created, and I know, you know, the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development loves projects like this, this is what they want to see. So again, it's, it's an, it's an option. And I'm offering that to the city and, and the applicant as well. I just think if there are some additional costs, there is possibly some opportunities to get additional funding so that it may not cost the city some funds and may even help the applicant in the process. So I just think that's something that, that would be worth pursuing in this, in this end. The, we really have made a lot of, a lot of ground on the landscaping, we had the latest plan on that. Conservation, I honestly, I don't even remember. The last time, the last plan you submitted to us, did that incorporate the, any changes from conservation? So there has been no changes to the site plan from conservation?
The site plan to date that you have incorporates all of the proposed conditions to date, including the approval. So there are some proposed conditions that Pat had thrown out there that have already been incorporated into the new plans.
Okay.
So the plans are as, as updated as they can possibly be, and then Pat's proposed conditions reflect what's outstanding. And the Conservation Commission did have some conditions of the project, making sure that the plantings weren't on the invasive species list, but that's a given, so.
And then, you know, the other issue that I, I really, I was looking at this in preparation for this evening's meeting, and the abudders list was out on the website, and I, was this the complete abudders list?
I believe so.
Okay, the only concern I had, and I know it's, we do it as the crow flies, and it's the idea with the traffic light, and this was the concern, when, when the country mouse, those condos went in, in those homes, the residents within a couple hundred feet of that intersection really did not want to see a set of lights. And anybody sitting here, I think, can understand that, right? And I, and I would employ everybody in this room to think of a, really a residential neighborhood. That's not on the brink of the downtown, it's not on the brink of a regional retail district with a set of traffic lights, right? So I, in the city of Lowell. It's hard, you're hard-pressed, and I, I've put a couple people to the test on that one, and hard-pressed to come up with something. There's two addresses that received notices for these meetings on Vonamav. The town of Drakot for the cemetery, and a gentleman who owns a piece of investment property that lives in Chelmsford. And the tremendous impact to this, we talk about transparency, this is the type of thing, you know, residents will go to the city council even and say, I can't believe a project of, you know, 72,000 square feet, 14 acres, major traffic impact, and I didn't receive a notice. And we know how this all works. I mean, I, I was the head of neighborhood group for years, and, you know, you think, you think it's everything that everybody in the universe is focused in on, and unless this is what you're geared into, you're living your life, and then all of a sudden, the work starts, the traffic lights go up, and you're sitting, what's going on? I got to back out of my driveway and what's happening here, so. I just, that, that just, and I understand the technical requirement, you know, I don't need to be lectured on that, but it really is, I think from a transparency standpoint, it really is...
Go to the town of Drakot for the Clay Pit Cemetery? Is that where you have to notify the clerk's office in Drakot?
Yeah, went to 62 Arlington Street, Town of Drakot Cemeteries, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So, so at least they're aware of it. At least they don't oppose it, I guess.
Yeah.
But that was just, you know, I, it caught me by surprise, I guess, when I looked at that. I didn't realize that.
Well, you rely on the...
No, and I understand that. And I know it's not a criticism of you, it's just, we sit here as a body, and I just know when this, when this starts, it's not going to sit well. And then that's, I bet you some councils will get some phone calls.
Heck, I could.
And it really is, it's unfortunate. I, can I tell you the truth? I feel very uncomfortable sitting here, knowing that. I really do.
Yeah.
You know, I, and I would hope if you're a resident and a member of a planning board where you live feels that way, you feel, you know, that should mean something to you. So I, so I, it's, it's, yeah, it's something that surprised me when I looked at that today. The proposed conditions, I think everything else is in place, Pawtucket Boulevard, I think we're in agreement on what is going to happen there. Again, from the landscaping perspective, the streetscape on the boulevard, I really like what's going on there. We addressed the, I think, the issues with the design of the, of the building. I would, I'm assuming, Counsel, that we still, even if the roundabout goes in, I mean, there is going to be an effect, and there could be some unintended consequences, there could be some additional traffic mitigation. I don't see it with the roundabout as far as the cut-through traffic, because it'll flow. Again, I go back to Pelham and the Hampshire, slows the traffic down and it flows. The traffic lights, everybody takes the path of, the course of least resistance, they're not going to want to sit. It, it is still going to create some queuing on Vonamav that isn't there right now.
Sometimes you get aggressive drivers that want, you know, when you're in the intersection, you're in the roundabout, you have the right of way. So hopefully people respect that, and when you're coming into it, you don't be aggressive, you know, they're not as aggressive as, people go through red lights, too, all the time.
The idea is, the smaller you design that roundabout, the better, more effective it is. Is that right, Mr.? So...
You still have Townsend Avenue and a few streets that the city really needs to look at that, is...
Well, that's what I'm concerned with, the traffic lights. The traffic lights, I think, would, are going to generate traffic down those side streets. And, and, I mean, you can see it, go down Townsend Ave, God forbid, they're going to at the front of, of...
Bowling Alley.
The bowling alley and cut through the entrance there. And, and, you know, we've dealt, we've dealt with, tried to deal with issues like that in the past. So I think, I think the monitoring needs to happen. I think we had the plan, it was six months after the project is built, continuing a year, and then annually ending after five years. I, I would hope the applicant still sees that as something that is warranted. I am, like I said, I would be concerned with, with unintended consequences, and again, this is a, this is a project that will have an impact on the area. We're trying, we're trying to mitigate that. Christine, to you on the MOU?
Yes.
Is that something this board can condition? We can't, because it's the city manager that would have to enter into the MOU, is that correct?
Correct.
Could we say the applicant is to pursue memorandum of understanding with the, with the city?
I don't see an issue with that, but would, as a just point of clarification, would, would the board still condition the light? I think I'm fine with there being a condition saying you need to pursue the memorandum of understanding that way if it does fall through.
Right.
I'm assuming contents of the MOU might not be public. Eventually, it might be a public document. I'm not really sure how that would go. I'm just trying to think logistically, if it falls through in a memorandum of understanding can't come to agreement, what that would look like in terms of their occupancy. So, and that's all. I'm sort of thinking a year ahead, mostly because I probably, I'm fairly confident I will not be involved in those conversations, so I won't always have the up-to-date information to keep up to the board, and I wouldn't necessarily know whatever happened with that MOU until a week before next Thanksgiving, when they're looking for their occupancy. Just being honest. But I will leave that up to the applicant, if they want the MOU to, how they feel about that being conditioned.
It might just, it might just be a letter to city manager, you know, outlining what we're proposing to do. I mean, we want to move in this very quickly. We'd like to have some understanding from the city manager that we can go down this road and hopefully resolve this very quickly. We'd like to know by the first month of 2019 or in that vicinity, that, okay, this is what we're going to do, we're going to put a plan together, we're going to submit it to the engineering department, they're going to tell us there's about 11,000 square feet, there's a couple of parcels that we're going to have to talk to people about and get this thing on the fast track. So we're at a point where we can be ordering materials and what we need. Again, without putting a traffic signal up, it goes a little quicker, because we're not ordering special poles and different things that are needed for a traffic signal, so... So we feel the roundabout may take a month or two to get it squared away, but as we know, the city can work in different speeds. But I think if we stay on them, and this is a big project, they'll work with us, especially the fact that we're looking to foot most of the bill for doing it, for this improvement.
That's very much appreciated, by the way. I can't put that into words.
You're dealing with, you know, you're dealing with a person in a group that, you're not, I'm not up here representing Stop &amp; Shop or Hanif, and I'm representing a local guy who grew up here, whose father had the first market 100 yards down the street, next to my grandfather's barber shop, and my father grew up at 340 Market Street. So we're all Greeks from the old country, and we come from the same horya, as they say in Greek, it's a village. And his word is his bond, and believe me, if he can make this work tomorrow, we would make it work tomorrow. So I don't think there's going to be any issue dealing with the demolish end of it. It's working with the city, and we've had great help from traffic engineers and peer reviews, and we have to peer reviews with the conservation. So it's gone through the process, and I think it's been a good process and enlightening for everybody, but it's going to be a great, great facility, and I think people are going to be happy with it, and they're going to enjoy it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Christine.
I was just going to offer, instead of having language of the memorandum of understanding in the decision, we, you could put something in there that DPD staff will update you within the first half of next year with the, say, February 2019, we can, DPD staff will provide an update to the board, and we can sort of let you know what direction things are headed in, and hopefully have a rough timeline. That might be.
Excuse me, Christine, but at that point, the board wouldn't have any additional authority.
Correct. So the idea being.
It would just be informational.
Yeah, so the idea would be, tonight, the conditional approval with the conditions with the light, with however we want to phrase it, that the applicant work with the city, pursue all options, with DPD staff providing a written update to the board in February 2019, and we would draft a memo, myself, Pat, or, and with Natasha, we'd draft a memo, we'd put it on the agenda under other business as a discussion item.
Probably go back, anyway.
And then that way, the board would be updated with what's happening. And then at that point, we would have a really good idea of which direction we were going in, and then if it was the roundabout, we'd at least have a timeline of when plans would be ready and votes would be taken, and sort of when it would be completed. We'd have a much better idea about all of that then.
One other question, well, and I think it's already been addressed. Is there the possibility of the applicant acquiring that land on a private basis without having to go through a eminent domain taking?
That's correct.
If they can come to an agreeable term with the, you know, property owners?
That's correct. There would be an assessment.
As Natasha indicated, we submit a plan with the roundabout, with the amount of property that needs to be taken, whether it's 11,000 or 12,000 square feet. And at that point, yes, it may go fairly smoothly, that some people will say, "Sure, I don't need that extra 15 feet on the radius," and, you know, it happens all the time when they do widening of streets, but if we have to do it through eminent domain, you know, we go down that road. But hopefully, that's not going to be the case. We're not talking about taking a building or taking somebody's house.
But potentially, it's not even an adversarial situation like an eminent domain might be common. It could be a private negotiation.
We talked about, you know, the assessment of the land. If the city assesses that 500 square foot strip at $1,500, we're paying that. City's not going to pay it. We're going to pay it to the property owner. So that's, you know, it should go fairly smoothly. I just think it's a little bit more land on the south side, they can maybe tweak it a little bit to bring it a little further south, so you don't have as much of an impact on the condominiums across Old Ferry. And, you know, without a, without a streetlight there, and without any possibility there of an issue, there's a couple of people that have roads, that have driveways, how they're going to get in and get out, there's a few logistics to go through, but I think it can be done fairly quickly. And we really want to move on it, because again, we'd like to have this place up and going and open by next Turkey Day 2019.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, Mr. Curtis, just a question on item six from Patrick's letter regarding the parking. It says, it indicated that parking provided for Brunswick Bowling at 647 Pataca Boulevard encroaches 677 Pataca Boulevard and will be converted to landscape space. Has the applicant reached out to the property owners of Brunswick Bowling about this change? Is that?
I have not at this point, but I will. It looks like maybe they're encroaching on land that is part of our project, so we need to speak with them about that encroachment and work that out. I think they have plenty of parking there.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that was my concern, is I didn't look at this, did they, are they losing, Christine, are they losing?
They may lose some spaces, but like Attorney Curtis said, it is on market basket property. And to Brunswick Bowling alleys, they were notified of this, so they would have had opportunity to see the plans, the plans are on site, would have been able to call the office.
Right.
So while I do think it's important that maybe to encourage good neighborly relations, that the applicant contacted Brunswick Bowling directly to say, "Hey, you might lose about 10 to 15 spaces here," we do feel that it is, they were sufficiently noticed.
We look at that as a cleanup item. Whether or not we get into an argument over that doesn't affect the project.
Okay.
It's not in the location that we need to require them to take the pavement out. We can come to an agreement, might be an easement, might be just remove the pavement, but it doesn't affect the project.
Well, I didn't pick it up on the plan, it was the comment from Patrick that.
Yeah, it's just a bookkeeping thing. I don't think it has any bearing on anything other than two adjacent property owners working out where the pavement is.
All right, well, just a closing comment from me on just the whole idea of the master plan, and I appreciate, I really appreciate Mr. Curtis and the applicant understanding how important that is to the neighborhood.
No, I agree.
You know, when communities put together master plans, really, the idea is to capture the heart and soul of the community, and then try to incorporate that into the zoning, so that when you're making planning and zoning decisions, they're not just cold, technical decisions, you're capturing the exact vibrancy and the essence of the community. I literally put my heart and soul into master plans in this city.
I agree.
Because I believe in that. We not, we not only capture how we feel today, but it's important what we pass on to the next generation. It's said that we stood here and we cared. That's the only reason I'm sitting in this chair. It's not to make people happy, and it's not to go along, and it's not to feel like, you know, oh, I'm, you know, somebody to approach because, you know, they need to get a project approved. I'm here because I want to do the right thing.
I think.
And I want to pass that on to the next generation.
I think everybody in this room, whether it's the Patacaville Residents Association, you know, sometimes we think, oh, they're adversarial to us, they're not. Everybody's here for the right purpose, to make this work. Economic development is good, this is a good project, it's submitted by a great company that has 30,000 employees, and they do very well, and we want, we want the best possible scenario. And as you said, if it costs a little bit more money on my client's end, that's okay, because in the long run, down the road, it's going to be the right decision to make. So that's, that's why we're here tonight, and that's why we, we want the approval, and we want to work quickly and expeditiously to get this roundabout project going.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Well, I only have a few comments. It's indicated, we hear it from three sets of traffic engineers, and they all come up to the same conclusion.
Good.
So that made it a little easier for me. One, they're saying, "Put the traffic light in, that gives immediate relief, and work towards the roundabout." I believe the neighbors are in agreement with that, the applicant's agreement with that, the city's agreement with that, I'm in agreement with that. There were some conditions that were requested by us, by the traffic engineer and planning staff. The applicant indicated they're willing to meet all those conditions, so I don't have a problem in voting in favor of this matter. I honestly do not believe the planning board has the authority to vote for roundabout. If you look for our site plan review, which this is, it's not a special perm or anything else, we do not have the authority to tell people we're taking their property away from them. So therefore, that's a negotiation, and it has to be done by the city, which the applicant's willing to do. We've heard that the city is willing to work with the applicant to do so. So I'm willing to, an approval with the conditions as requested, and hopefully, the traffic light with hopefully the end result being a roundabout. So that's all I have to say at this point in time. I don't want the board members to have any follow-up comments. If not, at this time, we can entertain a motion to whichever. Any board members want to be heard further? If not.
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Can't we just use that, your.
Sure, so I'll make a motion for approval with the, for the traffic light, with the following conditions. Number two, first conditions would be from city staff, Patrick, where did he put those? Which I believe they, with the site monitor, which people said they're in agreement of. And number two was just a stormwater report, operational maintenance plan. You'd have no problem giving us the maintenance plan. So those two conditions from staff. And then the other one would be the approval of the traffic light, with the conditions as outlined by the transportation engineer. And basically, that is given to us by Natasha Vance, with the conditions being, one, market basket will provide the following funding for Pataca Boulevard at the Work Bridge, the transportation demand management, traffic monitoring, regular city to scope and cost for the traffic calming, market basket will design the following off-site mitigation as shown, and those are listed through one through eight. Reconstruction of the raised medium-long Pataca Boulevard to prevent the U-turn, auto market basket, reconstruction of the medium revision of the signal of Pataca Boulevard and Old Ferry Road as needed to accommodate the U-turn maneuver, construction of additional left-turn lane on Pataca Boulevard, on Pataca Boulevard, Pataca had Old Ferry traffic light, with the timing adjustments of traffic, traffic, with the additional traffic and pedestrian accommodations and signal improvements, construct a mild block crosswalk with rectangular flash and beacon on Old Ferry Road at the entrance to Market Basket, construct sidewalk improvements along Old Ferry Road and Pataca Boulevard as shown on site plan, add bike showers on Old Ferry Road, design and construct the traffic light at Old Ferry and Vonham, develop the right-of-way permanent easement plans, and obtain associated property assessments that the city will coordinate with easement. So those conditions as requested by them, and not a condition, but a recommendation that the city and the applicant work together for the consideration of a roundabout, with the report back to us by the, by our planning staff to see how those negotiations go in by early February of 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, and I know you went through the memo here, I just want to make sure.
Sure.
You did list the traffic monitoring program, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yep. So everything that Natasha had in her comments.
Correct.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And also, we did have, yeah, the traffic monitoring plan was number three.
Traffic.
And I think you have them numbered by one, two, three.
Three C.
Three C.
Three C.
Yeah. Three C, yeah.
I'll second your motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made, and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Mr. Chairman, I am going to vote in opposition at the moment.
Okay, so we have one, two, three, four in favor, and one against. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
And thank you everyone for coming down, and thank you all for your very important input.
Thank you.
Mr. Dirk, thank you very much for all your help. I appreciate it. And again, have a nice Thanksgiving. Thank you. Good luck.
Good morning.
I'm here.
How you doing?
Good conscience.
Good.
I'm here.
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 We'll get to.
Good to see you.
Sorry, I'm late.
We'll get to you.
Don't worry about it.
How you doing?
See, I learned something about you.
Like me, one thing or two.
Is it bad on me?
Yeah, yeah. You're getting paid, right?
Yeah.
I don't think you take intangencies, do you?
What have they ever said?
You're not a lawyer, you don't take intangencies, like lawyers do, like us shysters, eh?
My wife would let me come home from bed.
Yeah.
Jesus.
Yeah, I got that, I got that.
Sometimes you give us something to highlight, though. Plus, the color's easy.
Very colorful, good walking.
The color's easy.
Second, I lost one, Dick, and you said, "Mike, was it Dick or you?" On the market basket, was it Dick the second, or the you?
Yeah, no.
Was it Dick?
Was it Dick?
It's the same thing, isn't it?
It's the same thing, isn't it?
Is this another one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we already got those.
It's the same thing we got in the mail, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hmm.
review, which is at 485866 Townsend Ave and 800.1-810 Vonham Ave. that the planning board provide a preliminary review of their proposed project at the address listed above. This is not a public hearing. The planning board will render no decision related to the site plan nor guarantee any future decisions, whether positive or negative, on any project that requires pre-application review. The application has submitted preliminary plans to construct a 16,800-square-foot -- The application has submitted preliminary plans to construct a 16,800-square-foot religious temple located at 485866 Townsend Ave. And 800.1-810 Varnum Ave. The subject property is approximately 5,025,300, excuse me, in 37 square feet of land and is located in a suburban, single mixed-use zoning district. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman Linehan. Members of the Board, Attorney John Cox, 375 Gorham Street, Lowell, Massachusetts. Represent the Community of Khmer Buddhist Monks, Inc. Appears that we may be shifting here from food for the body to maybe food for the soul. The, we will be requesting from the planning board a site plan review of this project as well as a special permit pertaining to the entranceway. What we're trying to do here with this, and this has been a kind of an ongoing situation, but we're trying to find a permanent home, or the monks are trying to find a permanent home here in the city for the very, you know, active and involved Southeast Asian community. They have not been successful over the years, for whatever reasons, in trying to locate a permanent temple. And this really exciting project would be one where they could and hope to build a fabulous temple near the banks of the Meramek River. As you can see, a couple of the monks are here this evening, as well as a couple of the principals from the corporation. And we appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. Appreciate the efforts of Christine McCall and other members from the city departments that we've met with over the past couple of months. And we have received a memo dated November 9th with comments from various city agencies, which we have reviewed and are working on, and some of the matters we think have been resolved, and we're looking forward to presenting to you at the proper time. Let me just give you a little background. As the chairman stated, the piece of property here is approximately 12 acres. It's about five different parcels on Townsend and in the back to Varnum Avenue. Most of it is vacant land. And there are a few homes on Townsend, which have been purchased over the past several years, but most of it is vacant. And Matt is here, and Matt can go over the plans with you. And again, a lot of work has been done on this already. The idea here for this type of a temple, for this temple, would be a religious, a religious place, a holy temple, one where the members of the Southeast Asian community and other people could go and meditate and have some quiet time. My understanding and, you know, knowledge of this has come recently as to how these temples work. Being Catholic, that's all I'm familiar with. So I think, okay, Saturday and Sunday, Masses and what have you. It doesn't work that way. Actually, there would be very, very little activity at this temple most of the week. And not on every Sunday would there be some sort of service. And even though there's the normal Sundays during the year where there would be some activity, you might have 100 people there. And that ranges from like 10 o'clock in the morning till like 1:00 in the afternoon. Quarterly, about once, four times a year, there are larger gatherings, which the monks have had ongoing for the last several years. Currently, they have them at the Elks. It's over Saturday and Sunday. They just had one this past summer, where you could have 400 or 500 people attending these services. But again, that's over a two-day period. And it's something that they've actually held at the Elks over the last couple of years with no issues, no traffic situations, no anything, really. The entranceway into the plan, and Matt will go over that in a minute, is there's actually an existing easement that is about 20 feet on the Elks side, which butts the property, and 20 feet on the Market Basket side. So 40 foot easement goes in about 1,500 feet off of Old Ferry Road. That would be the main, maybe if you can show that and point that out, Matt. And that would be the main access that we're talking about now. We have met with the Elks, and we've talked to the Elks about trying to beautify that part of their parking lot that would have but that easement. We've also spoken with Market Basket about any concerns they may have. On both cases, they were very supportive. So that would be the reason for a special permit because of the length of the entranceway in. If you look closer on the plan, I think you guys all, I think you all have the copy of the smaller plans, there also is a smaller entranceway in from Townsend. We could actually use that, I suppose, but we'd prefer not to. We'd prefer to stay out of that neighborhood and take it in off of Old Ferry Road. Though the entranceway that is shown on Townsend, which is much shorter, would be an emergency entranceway only. It would be locked by a gate, fire department, you know, public service would have access to be able to open that gate. Coincidentally, at the end of the, at the end of the easement, is the fire department, the fire station there on Old Ferry Road. So it actually works out quite well for public safety that we would have a fire department right there in case anything were to happen. We, the cemetery that was mentioned earlier in the previous application, the Clay Pit Cemetery, which is Civil War Cemetery, which I knew nothing about until a couple of months ago, hate to say, but owned by the town of Drake. Since the, the community of the Khmer Buddhist Monks, Inc. have taken over some property on Townsend, they have taken over maintaining that cemetery. And I've not been there myself, but everybody that I've talked to who does have concerns with that cemetery have been very, very happy with the results of their maintaining it and taking care of it. And so clearly, as we go forward, we would formalize something with the town of Drake pertaining to that plot of land. But it's obviously a very, very interesting piece of history right there, not in the middle of it, but on this, on this site. Expect this to be an eight to an eight and a half million dollar project, a beautiful temple, one that will bring great pride, we think, not only to the monks and their association, but also to the city of Lowell. And we look forward to working with the city, with Christine and all the various departments here, with the, with the planning board. Clearly, at some point, we would have to also appear before the Conservation Commission. But we look forward to working with everybody involved, as well as the Patacaville Citizens' Association. And, you know, I think the hearing you had earlier shows how people can work things out. And that's what we would hope to do here. We don't think it'll be a large, we will do a traffic study, obviously, we have a traffic engineer involved already, but we don't think this would create a large volume of traffic anytime, actually, even when they're using it religious purposes on a Sunday, on a normal Sunday between those hours, we don't think it would have, I mean, you're talking about 100, 150 people, it's not, it's not going to be much there. The other thing is during the week, it would just be the monks and the few people who work there. So it's a very exciting proposal. It's one that, obviously, these people have put a lot of time and money into already. And we look forward to going through the process with you. We have requested a, you know, butters list, so we will expect to get this process formally going as quickly as possible. But we appreciate the time this evening, and maybe Matt wants to go over a few more of the technical details. Please do.
For the record, Matt Hammer, Lamplex, 10 George Street, Lowell. I don't know how much involved. You want to get into the details. But as Attorney Cox had elaborated on, when the, when the Buddhist monks organization first came to me, you know, this property had a number of different aspects to it that are unique. One is that they have acquired a lot of land here. There's 12 acres, there's access off of Varnum Avenue, there's access off of Townsend, and there's two 20-foot easements that go back 100 years from the formation of those easements that are on the, are on the Elks property and also the Market Basket property. And, you know, you would think the simplest thing to do is to just, you know, have an access off of Townsend Avenue and then just utilize this portion of the property. And we felt as though that, you know, with this project, if there was an alternative to do a much longer road out to Old Ferry, whether it was something that's financially feasible for this organization to do, and it just so happens that there was a fire station on Old Ferry, so they immediately said that, yes, that's what they'd like to do. And then what that does is it takes all the traffic concerns that would have been on Townsend Avenue out of the equation, which I thought was a big plus for the project. The second thing was, is that we're in the 100-year floodplain, the property itself. And the Buddhist monks have already gone through the process of purchasing a piece of land from the Elks property in order to provide the grading that would be necessary to provide that compensatory storage for the filling that'll be in the floodplain primarily for the columns and for the roadway and the drainage to the parking areas. So we went through a pretty long due diligence period trying to solve the problem of making sure that this project would meet the performance standards with conservation. And we were able to do that. They went forward and purchased this property, and we feel as though that the cutting and the filling will be no net impact to the nearby floodplain to the Clay Pit Brook. The other thing we, we went forward in doing, and this has gone back a year, is to make sure we vetted out the impacted properties that are adjacent to this project, namely the Elks property, the Market Basket property. And also, we met preliminarily with the Patacaville group, not in their formal neighborhood meeting, but just in a private meeting, just to show them the project as well, as well as going through DPD and, as well. So what we're able to do with this project is bring an entrance off of Old Ferry Road, have this come in here, and this, this whole portion here will actually be a porous pavement design. The underlying soils are all sand soils, so it's conducive to that type of design. And I should also note that prior to even doing an analysis, we actually went through and did a full geotech subsurface exploration in the location of the temple and had preliminary columns, you know, already sized and designed to handle this temple, which will essentially be a flow-through foundation design. What that allows us to do is basically have an underground, a ground-level parking area underneath the temple, which will act to help with some of the parking needs, but also to be a flow-through foundation, and in fact, there is a flood from the Meramek River.
Matt, I think this, you know, this is maybe evident, but the sighting of the actual building, does that have to do with the, the conditions of the property from the flooding and so forth? Where it, where it's actually sighted as opposed to somewhere in a more, you know, open part of the property, say on the other side?
Well, one of the things we wanted to do is pull it away from the adjacent neighborhood in here. So we have a wetland area here. We have a wetland up here, and this just seemed like a logical location to cite the temple in this location.
I was just thinking, yo, the side where you come in from Old Ferry.
Yeah.
Where you have that large area, large strip right there to the, to the, above where your driveway comes in?
Yeah. So one of the primary reasons for this organization to purchase the property, they're trying to get as close to the river as possible. It's part of the, you know, temples that are in Cambodia that are sighted right next to rivers. That was one of the concerns. Even though we're not going to have a clear view of the river, they wanted to be as close as possible.
That answers the question. I just was wondering why you might not have sighted it on the, on the other side of the property.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So what we're utilizing through this project is going to be these sheet flow into rain gardens, and also to use what we, is what they call a true grid parking lot, which essentially is grassed parking lots. They can take fire trucks, vehicular traffic, and these parking lots aren't going to be used that much, so they'll be maintained as mowed grass parking lots. And then, and then when they do need the parking, they'll be there available to them. And that entrance drive will come through here. There'll be a portico with a turnaround here, parking along either side of the temple, underground parking underneath the temple, and then this, these parking areas here. We're also going to provide, as Attorney Cox stated, an emergency egress point out to Townsend Ave in the fact, in the event that that's needed for an emergency of any kind.
Matt, can I, can you bring up the rendering of the building?
Sure.
So again, you're looking for feedback from the board, and I know the Market Basket people were, were sensitive to that, our concern. Again, being in the suburban neighborhood district and not having, not trying to change the skyline when you, when you approach, what is the height of the, you know, my point of reference is Catholic references to is more like a steeple, but, but what, you know, what would be the height? Because it's a 35-foot height requirement in the suburban single family zone, no higher than that.
Good point. We've had numerous discussions about this, the interpretation of a spire, and whether this is considered a structure because of its layered cake configuration of this. The 35 feet is to the top of this here. This is beyond it. So this may have to come off unless we get a variance from the zoning board of appeals. And then if we get the variance from the board, zoning board of appeals, then this would come back onto the structure.
I think that would require our approval as well.
I'm not, I'm not sure that the planning board has any say on the size dimensionally of a religious structure. I'm also not confident they need to ask for a variance. We'd have to look into the case law, but I don't think, I don't think any land use board has a say on how tall a religious structure is. That's my opinion. Obviously, I'd have to confer with the law department for confirmation.
So twofold. We'll confer with the law department, and we'll ask your client to respect and take into consideration what our concerns are relative to the skyline on that.
I can say that this, this whole point of the temple is a main focal point of the entire temple itself, the way that the, there's a line that'll project, a vertical line that projects completely through the temple all the way down to the ground. That's a very specific way that the temple's being designed around. But we'll most certainly, you know, do some work with the city and you folks to come up with a... with a design that would satisfy everybody.
I have a question. A lot of plan there regarding service to the temple, particularly trash and getting the other truck, type truck, and locating those things. Man, I mean, you are adjacent to a residential neighborhood there, and it's important to locate.
Sure. We'll most certainly provide an area. We may be able to facilitate the refuge disposal within the parking garage itself, being pulled out potentially, and then having them loaded on. I don't think that, they'll just be individual cases that'll generate a large amount of trash, so we can make sure we address that and show how we'll accommodate that.
And then, Matt, what we're looking for too is a pretty good landscaping plan. I will say Market Basket did a good job with the landscaping.
Yep.
I had the privilege of walking that site several years ago with a gentleman named Paray Penn, who I know, and had the opportunity to walk the site. Actually went in the building, took off my shoes to sit, and he wanted me to meet one of the monks, and so I have walked that entire site. What I would like to see is obviously, again, with Market Basket, they are really putting a lot into the landscaping and being respectful of how that is going to be viewed.
Sure.
And so it honestly, it's hard to get an idea of what's coming down and what isn't. I suspect you're going to spend a lot of time at conservation relative to this plan, but I think that that would be important.
Absolutely. You're going to notice these rain gardens that go around the entire area here, which are all planted detention areas, so that's going to add a lot of vegetation. Most certainly, we're going to have shade trees go down the entire entrance, and we'll work with DP, the DPD department on that. And I just know that this organization is very pro vegetation and landscaping, so you're going to find that this is going to have a fair amount of landscaping involved with this project.
Just one last comment for me. On the, on the, the letter from DPD, I guess, whatever you can do, make sure, it was kind of implying too to have access on Townsend Ave. I know you have fire access, but whatever needs to be worked out for your, the main entrance for this, and if the fire department has a concern, to continue to focus on the entrance and exit on Townsend. And I think even in the memo, I really don't know the impact from a traffic perspective from this, I really don't. I don't think we have a lot to go by. So I, once again, this is a fairly large project being proposed before we even have the results of another large project, and I really think, again, a peer review would be something we really should be required for the, for the project as well.
I'd also like to know, this big darker green area is going to just remain preserved also. So you're going to find that this large area here, that abuts this portion of the neighborhood, will still be that wooded area that's there now. And, yeah, we most certainly will, you know, have a traffic engineer dovetail it into whatever's happening here with the Market Basket project and make sure that the, you know, any impacts are properly addressed.
In our last project at Market Basket, Mr. Hamlet talked about having a seat at the table, the neighborhood group. Have you worked with them at all, the neighborhood group? Are they part of this?
We met with them very briefly. We, just to give you kind of introduction of what we talk about, clearly, we definitely have John, and I have, yeah, we want to make, we want to make it palatable.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's just important. I don't have to tell.
Yeah, we will continue.
Yeah, all right.
Any of the neighbors who are here this evening have any concerns or any questions they'd like to ask?
I have this time.
Okay. Obviously, you're here, obviously, you're the pre-up, and, you know, my, I'm always willing to hear from neighbors while they're here. It actually helps the applicant look at the preview which coming down the road. So a lot of times, you raise great points that we haven't considered, so we always welcome your input. So if anybody wants to speak, just please come to the microphone.
Of course. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other board members have any further comments?
Yes, obviously, we don't know what the traffic impact's going to be at this point. However, you know, be it coincidence or whatever, there's, there's other things happening in this area. Subject to what your traffic studies show, and if we do a peer review and everything, has any thought or any, been given to any participation in the overall mitigation in the area?
That's a very good question. We have not, beyond just general discussion with Market Basket pertaining to the project and whether they would, they would have any, you know, major issues with it, we have not talked about anything beyond that. I mean, I'm not sure, clearly, we can't match the very generous.
No, no, but, you know, if in fact, you know, it's all the same neighborhood, it's all the same, you know, access points and pressure points, shall we say?
Of course.
So, you know, perhaps, you know, if in fact, it's determined that, you know, some additional pressure is created by this project, you know, it would obviously make a lot of sense for it to be a joint effort, you know, in that area.
And we will have, I guarantee those conversations will take place as we go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, did you want to speak? Yes, just cut the microphone, give us your name. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jake Southland. I live at 331 Totman Street in Lowell. Just as a point of information, I was curious, and forgive me, I didn't come in on the beginning of the Market Basket presentation, but the fire station on Old Ferry Road, has any consideration been given to when the fire department has a run and they come back? They have to back into the station. How would that impact the traffic flow? That's my, that's just a general question. Thank you.
And it's a good one, and I'll ask both Natasha and the fire department to weigh in on it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. So if they come back for another plan in the future, because this is the pre-up, they necessarily don't have to come back, our senior planner is going to ask our traffic engineer to look into that question for us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Sure, Mr. Lockhart?
We have a time, rough timetable as far as...
Coming back?
What?
For them coming back, you mean?
Well, no, you know, the overall project.
Well, I think, you know, we'd like to move it quickly. What that timetable means with the holidays coming, and clearly, I understand, there's a project going on next door that, you know, there's some uncertainties, although it seems like Lockhart straightened out tonight. So, yeah, I mean, I get that it's not going to happen next week, but we'd like it to happen, you know, as quickly as possible. And I don't know what that means, Mr. Lockhart, but...
All right, all right.
Yeah. Like I said, the butts list has been ordered, and a lot of the work has been done as far as to this point anyways, and we expect to continue to meet with Christine and her other departments in the city and go from there, but...
I have just one question. The lighter green that's cleared from the vegetation, is that that could just be a lawn area for activities, or shouldn't you have some arborists go in there and pick out trees?
Yeah, we're open to just about anything. We were going to leave this as a grassed area for some passive recreation. We've even spoken to the Elks group to share the use of the land. If they have an overflow, they could come into our property as well, and vice versa. We'll still be, you know, utilizing the Elks property for some combined use with, there's four bigger events that this group has, so we're going to keep maintaining that relationship with them. And right now, we're open to any suggestions and, you know, related to some trees that would be put in there, but also to have some quality recreation area for, you know...
I don't know whether there were active things going on at the events that occur, you need that very open area.
Yeah. It's nice to be able to maybe put a tent up for something, or, you know, or something along those lines, or, but to use a nice open field that's level can be very useful.
Yeah, I'd like you to have a discussion with DPD about how to treat that landscape wise.
Sure.
One other, have you thought about outside lighting? Should there be some night activity there in the long...
We don't want to put a lot of lighting, I don't think, through, you know, just, but we'll have some passive lighting, wall sconce-type lighting around the building, probably a few outdoor lights, but we'll make sure we come in with some lighting schemes.
We've got a pretty large parking area there in the grass.
Yep. And the nice thing is, is...
And you are right adjacent to some housing there.
Right. We're leaving this dark green buffer here, respecting the neighbors here. And then, you know, this is a low-impact design development, right? So we have porous pavement, we have rain gardens, and we have this green parking lot material that's going to meet all the goals that mass stormwater would want to see. And it's going to, you know, it's going to be a beautiful project when it's done, yeah. I mean, it truly will be green, not just on this plan, but it's, you know, you know, if you go out to the property now, even they take, this group does take care of the things that they own, so this will be well-manicured, this property.
Well, I have one thing about pedestrian access. If the people using this facility want to go to the river, what about the, is there adequate on Townsend, the Townsend, yeah, is there adequate safe passage?
Yeah, so there's going to be a proposed sidewalk that goes all the way out to Old Ferry. There's going to be a sidewalk that's going to go up to the Market Basket property, which was requested by them, and, and then they can just walk down the, down Townsend.
Okay.
And go out to Pawtucketville Park.
I guess then, when you get to Pawtucketville, when you want to cross that, is there going to be any safe...
You're going to have to walk up to the intersection of Lexington or Bedford and cross over where...
The high-rise, huh?
Yeah, where the grand view is, and there's a pedestrian crosswalk there.
Okay.
Well, thank you, good luck, Ma. We will see you for a site plan review.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Good luck. Thank you very much. So moving along on the agenda, we have notices, Department of Planning and Development for the draft of the 2009-2023 Open Space and Recreational Plan. Is that some use, Christine?
Yes, myself and Giovanni Baez-Rose, who's the neighborhood planner, we've been, over the last year, been working on updating the city's open space and recreation plan. We're required to do it every five years to remain eligible for state funding. So we hosted a series of public meetings, community events, we attended neighborhood groups, we engaged with a lot of citizens online via email, we had a survey, and so we sort of compiled everything that we heard, what people wanted. And so the entire document essentially is an existing conditions plan of all our open spaces and recreation programs. And then there is, at the end of the document, our goals and action items. It starts on page 92, that's usually the fun stuff everyone wants to get to. It's online, it's on our Facebook page. We are accepting public comments through November 30th, then we're going to put those all together, send them to the state. The state is going to come back with their own comments and concerns that we'll need to address. And then we will actually be back in front of this board, the Conservation Commission, and the City Council for a formal vote. We will actually need a vote of support of the plan as our final approval. And then, once it's officially adopted, we're good to go.
Any of the board members have any questions of Christine about the open space?
No.
Wait till she presents it, Mr. Chairman. Okay. And will be any input at this point?
But we do recommend that if anyone has a chance, both the board and anyone listening at home, have any comments that they'd like to address now.
All right, thank you.
You can email myself or Giovanni.
Thank you, Christine. Any of the board members have any further comments from any of the boards here?
I have one comment about, we had a fun morning down with National Grid on School Street, and Rock Street on the corner, there's a fire powerhouse building that is partially boarded up, and they would like to have it torn down, but because it's within the acre historic district, they, you know, we have a certain procedure we have to follow, and we did look at the building very solidly constructed. However, we've requested that they submit an engineering report from their structural engineer, and their response was they're going to come to our next meeting, I think it's December 16th, present that, at which time we'll make a decision regarding the fate of the building. It was fun, even in the rain, you know. A lot of old buildings down around there that are kind of nice-looking, you know.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, just a comment. If we could, Christine, I noticed on the city's website that the acre revitalization plan from 1999 is out there, but I noticed like the Pawtucketville neighborhood master plan is not out there, and also the Senaval plan is not out there.
I can double-check to make sure they're on the DPD website. I think a lot of things are on the backend on the website, but ever since we transferred from the old site to the new site, a lot of things didn't carry over, so we, because they're on the backend, we assumed they're up, but I can make sure.
The Senaval plan is fascinating. I attended that when it was actually the students, Richard Rakers worked here, yeah, the students from MIT, and, Richard, were you there for the presentation?
I was in that group. I ran that group when that was going on. Yeah, I remember, and it's old now, it's got to be updated.
Yeah, but you know, a lot of that, a lot of that regarding, even like we applied for the DCU and the Dunkin' Donuts at the site, that design is a result of that plan. You know, the basics are still...
The old show station.
No, it's actually a very good plan. I mean, there's a lot of elements. I mean, the benefit is understanding these plans and knowing them, and then knowing what elements still apply and what elements, obviously, some things are dated.
I'd love to see that, I didn't think of it at all.
I think it would be helpful.
It would be, yeah, it would be helpful.
Do that, thank you.
Christine, any updates for us, or just, I know we have a couple of things coming in December?
Uh, yeah, well, just the next meeting, we have a pre-up for a residential development on 50 Payne Street, and then we have a site plan review and special permit for 493 and 509 Market Street, which is the vacant lot next to the SAC Club. They're proposing a mixed-use ground-floor commercial residential, and I actually have those plans for you tonight.
Okay, thank you. If we have anything, nothing further from the board members, would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Moved second.
Motion made in second, all in favor, say aye.
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 We have adjourned. Good night, and thank you, everyone, and happy Thanksgiving.